Good evening, everybody. We're going to begin the meeting and as everybody can see from the agenda, there are a series of public hearings tonight. We're going to open the public hearing. Fair enough, Hershey, thank you very much. Is there a motion to come out of the executive session?
I hope we close the executive session.
Second, I move the second all paper. I agree to give it back in public. Okay, getting back to the original point of why we're here. We have a series of public hearings tonight. The first public hearing is going to be on Site Plan 24, here's your two major home occupation requests at Lord's Lane. So the public hearing is open and anybody wishing to come forward, we'd be proud. And so I've been anticipating a lot of votes here tonight. So we are going to impose a time limit of three minutes per person for this particular public hearing. And so.
That's thing, yeah.
And so anybody wishing to speak is asked to come up to the mic, say your name and where you live in town. And we'll be happy to listen to you again. So this is a public hearing regarding major home occupation or automotive, automotive services, small engine repair at 12 Lord's Lane. So anybody wishing to speak, please come up, identify yourself again, based on the ground here. With everybody, the three minutes. Yeah, this is a public hearing.
I guess I can start off. My name's Ken Kopf, I live at 30 Lord's Lane. So I don't know Mr. Anderson, I've never met him. I have no one way or the other about his personal desires. My concern is a business that is like the business that they're talking about will cause a certain amount of disruption. The area is definitely a residential area. I love motors, I love small engines. I have worked around mechanical stuff all my life. I love doing the type of things that Mr. Anderson does. That's things I enjoy, but to me, there's a place for that. I don't believe Lord's Lane is appropriate place for that type of business. It's just the noise that's involved in that is extreme. And unless you've worked in that occupation, I don't think people fully understand the amount of noise and hazards that that type of business creates. Now, and then the bigger question is for the town, because of the houses being so close to one another there, what precedent the town is going to set? Is a house being 200 feet away from a business like that? Okay, I mean, can they not complain? This is where a precedent is of such importance for the town they have to look at, especially in areas like Lord's Lane, which hasn't really been developed as fully commercial or fully residential. But if you drive through the area, it's clearly residential. There have been historical businesses down Lord's Lane. There are other businesses that are run there. Most of those businesses aren't run there with noise. They physically are a business located there, but all their work is done offsite. So they're not a noise concern, they're not a hazardous waste concern, they're not drainage concerns, noise concerns, business hours concern, traffic concerns, vehicle concerns, ATVs running up and down the road. So as it is now, I don't know why ATVs run up and down Lord's Lane, but since I've lived there, a significant number of ATVs go up and down that road. Enough that probably the police department is well aware of them. I'm sure they get complaints. Maybe they're going down to a trail, maybe it's fine, but that is likely to increase, not decrease. And not that I'm opposed, I mean, if the town wants to make this decision, I will certainly submit an exact application, probably within a few weeks. Because when I retire, I'd like to do a side occupation. And since I've enjoyed motors all my life, then why couldn't I have the same business? Because the town set that precedent. So then my concern is, does the town want to set that precedent? Thank you.
Next. Public hearing on Lord's Lane.
Hi, Melissa Costella, 123 Boys Corner Road. Last I checked, we were the land of opportunity. And I understand that there is a lot of concerns about business hours and there's a lot of concern about hazardous material mitigation. I would like to see us work with people, work with our businesses, people that want to have a business in this town. The last time I tried to bring in my mower to another company that fixes small engines, they told me I was going to be four weeks out before I got my mower or my weed went back. The trades industry is a dying industry. And if we don't make opportunities for these people to continue fixing things that are broken, it's going to create a problem in our town. I just hope that we could maybe work with the homeowner or the potential business owner to try to make this work. Thank you.
My name is Sean Gillis. I share roughly 208 feet of property line with Mike. I live beside him, I've been there for 20 years. This business was not here when I moved in. It was a quiet neighborhood, it was a great place. Didn't have problems with loud noises, loud noises late at night. And I question right now, I question you as a planning board, because he had a small business occupation that he was allowed. That permit was pulled two years ago. He has litigation against him for an illegal junkyard. On top of those two things, automotive repair is not even allowed in our zone. What I don't understand is, first and foremost, we pushed off that work, we pushed off what we were doing as far as what was going to court, so that we could entertain trying to have a bigger, a bigger business. Which, I don't know, I, what I would ask each and every one of you is, is if you would go home, including a woman, which I agree that people working on engines, all that type is a dying breed. But, you know, I would question each and every one of you, when you go home, do you want to hear that? Do you want to hear the revving, revving, revving? Do you want to hear the pounding where you can't get a wheel off, we gotta pound it and pound it and pound it? You know, we talk about hours, we talk about eight to eight, Monday through Sunday. I mean, really, Monday through Sunday, eight to eight? I will tell you something already, eight o'clock means nothing at my house. It doesn't matter if it's nine, it doesn't matter if it's 10, it doesn't matter when I get home at 12:30 at night. It doesn't matter. My neighbor is working at different times and he has no hours. I'll tell you right now, I don't wish him any ill will, I wish him the best in trying to go forward and create his business, but I just do not want his business beside me. It's just not fair. The summertime, you know, it's hard to keep my windows open. You know, I mean motorcycles back and forth sometimes in front of my house. Sometimes it's up and down his driveway over there. I mean, it's all, I just want you guys to think about that. If this was beside your home, how much you would like it and what you would want to do. It's just not the place for it. That's what I got.
Yeah, I know, I kind of came in late. My name is Pam Benoit, and I'm at 14 Parent Street. And it's a quiet town, it's a quiet street. But currently, we have neighbors that have very big, loud trucks, almost like a monster truck, but they're not, they're super loud. They start up at various times, they come in and out. They're our neighbors, we share their driveway, they're our neighbors. We have neighbors across the street that have small businesses that can be allowed sometimes, you know, it's, it's okay. I mean, it's, what is it, it's summertime, our windows are shut because we have air. I understand the concern being a neighbor of somebody with a very active driveway, a very active lifestyle too, perhaps. But I have gone and gotten a lot of things fixed at the drop of the hat that I couldn't get fixed any other time. Having a small business, like Ray used to live up on Junction Road, we used to be able to go up there and get stuff fixed. And he's now expanding down in Kidderick, what have you. Point being is, I agree we should work together as a town to keep small business here, to keep South Berwick thriving. And noise is noise, I know there's ordinances and all that stuff. Would I want to live next to him? Sure, I'd have to laugh off a few things, you know, whatever, but I'm not exactly an easy neighbor to live next to either. But I would just like the board to consider the small, the small business aspect of this. And I understand there's probably a personality aspect, because, you know, I mean, what happens if I want to rip my Harley up and down the street? You know, I mean, you know, it's a free country. We should be able to do what we want to do, respectful of our neighbors. And I just hope that moving forward, Chris can still have his business and still help me out when things break at a drop of the hat. So I appreciate that, thank you.
My name is Ken Holmes, Waterside Lane, South Burn. You know, just real briefly, I empathize with small business owners today. It's not easy, especially in a, in a regulated environment. But we're talking about a residential zone. We have zoning ordinances for a reason. I live less than a mile away from this, so I'm not directly impacted by any noise or actually the action that could be taken here. However, if in the same R3 residential zone, somebody were to open a business like this next door to me, I would, I would not be happy. You know, if the town and the board need to address the situation of affordable automotive service, you know, do so in a zoning change in a commercial zone, but don't do it in a residential area. And I, and I, in, in reference to a prior comment, you are establishing, in my opinion, a precedent here, and it's not a good one in, in this residential zone. So, thanks.
Any further public comments on Lord's Lane?
Do you care? Actually, we received one by email and we wanted to read it as a record.
I was going to read it.
They had another one though, but you're not going to read it?
Well, we're entertained, I'm just going to read the name, put it out there. Is there anybody on Zoom that have any public comments? Last opportunity for Lord's Lane for public hearings closed. I can't, Chris, please, not for me. Can you hear me now? Okay, thank you for your advice. Very good, any last minute, any further comments on Lord's Lane?
I have another question, if I can back up.
You can say a question, but we may or may not initiate our public hearing. Please get off, sir, I can't hear you.
I would question where the pot plant was. We talked about that today, we talked about setbacks, will we see the miller in those setbacks? And curious about setbacks, curious about the water behind the, behind this new building, which is within 250 feet. I'm curious about all those, because we're here, we're getting comments, but, I mean, what? We kind of left there in the COVID ending this morning. There was no final, you know, there was nothing about the oil that was there, it had its special spot. You know, there was nothing to talk about, things that were talked everywhere, that, you know, used to be a junkyard, but now it's all proximity, all the little houses and things. So, I mean, everything just kind of.
Public areas, yeah, that's not the purpose of this portion of the meeting. This portion of the meeting is a public hearing, here, let's say public feedbacks. It is scheduled for further discussion. I anticipate some of those things. Okay, no further conversations or comments related to Lord's Lane, we closed the public hearing. But before I close the public hearing, sorry, I just wanted to acknowledge for the record, what we did here from Sean Gillis tonight, Sean also sent in a comment, hearing what he said here tonight. We also received something from Brian O'Connor regarding this and the opposing to home occupation. Also heard from Reginald in the, in the, the revving. Bradley Fletcher, Plain Lane, support, so opposing the major home occupation. Also have something from Marsha Hansen, opposition to the home occupation. Something from Paula and Joe, the voice of major home occupation. And they are opposed to being through. Adrian O'Connor, Plain Lane, and they are opposing, as well as Maria Dagan, is expressing concerns. Not necessarily opposing, but expressing concerns related to noise and traffic. And we received one more, and that one more is from Christine and Tina Blues. And they are opposed to the granting of this particular application. All of those, those are in the record. All right, to close, any further conversation, comments on Lord's Lane? Any other Zoom world? The public hearing's closed, and we will move on at this point in time. We're going to, maybe we advertise this until 6:30, and they'll probably just make a little break until 6:30. Okay, we're going to just recess until 6:30 for the other, 6:30 meeting time, or another public hearing, or at least just say a little things. You're welcome to say. And then the bigger question is for the town, because of the houses being so close to one another there, what precedent the town is going to set? Is a house being 200 feet away from a business like that? Okay, I mean, can they not complain? This is where a precedent is of such importance for the town they have to look at, especially in areas like Lord's Lane, which hasn't really been developed as fully commercial or fully residential. But if you drive through the area, it's clearly residential. There have been historical businesses down Lord's Lane. There are other businesses that are run there. Most of those businesses aren't run there with noise. They physically are a business located there, but all their work is done offsite. So they're not a noise concern, they're not a hazardous waste concern, they're not drainage concerns, noise concerns, business hours concern, traffic concerns, vehicle concerns, ATVs running up and down the road. So as it is now, I don't know why ATVs run up and down Lord's Lane, but since I've lived there, a significant number of ATVs go up and down that road. Enough that probably the police department is well aware of them. I'm sure they get complaints. Maybe they're going down to a trail, maybe it's fine, but that is likely to increase, not decrease. And not that I'm opposed, I mean, if the town wants to make this decision, I will certainly submit an exact application, probably within a few weeks. Because when I retire, I'd like to do a side occupation. And since I've enjoyed motors all my life, then why couldn't I have the same business? Because the town set that precedent. So then my concern is, does the town want to set that precedent? Thank you. Look.
You know.
Yeah, so welcome to another public hearing. This one is six thirty regarding MSP twenty four zero zero three San Bill State. This is in regards to amendment file with this board. Condition six, condition six with the condition that we based on the prior permit. Essentially making that right away area go through way. And I know everybody here is probably aware that is what I'm talking about. So again, the banking and development has filed a deal, but not a deal, an actual new application and amendment. Seeming to reduce that restriction. Because this is a new application and it's a recycling entity for a public hearing. So tonight's meeting, this public hearing is due here. Any questions, comments or concerns from the public that reside on that road or anybody else who wishes to make a comment? Including the developers, representatives, if they so choose. Questions can be asked, but don't necessarily anticipate that the question will be answered. This is a public hearing. It is an opportunity for us to hear from you. Just like the prior one, I'm going to leave a comment two, three minutes. And with that being said, if there are no further forward comments. We're going to go ahead and open the public hearing for MSP twenty four zero zero three. For the record, I just want to make sure everybody understands. Tony that has accused himself of this particular matter. And Zach, we're recognizing Zach as a voting member on this particular issue. So, being said, anybody wishing to approach the board and maybe any. Questions come to concerns known for this. This is a public hearing.
Hi, Tony Palazzetti, Meadow Pond Estates. I live at Six Whitetail Drive. I am the president of the HOA. Appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening on this project, this appeal. So, I'm gonna go into a little bit of history here and I know this, you know, the board is fully aware of this, but for the public, I think it's important to hear this. Because the appeal in part talks about the delay that condition six is going to put on this project. So I'm just gonna give you a little bit of history and then talk specific to the appeal. So in October of twenty two, the traffic engineer for Sewell reports that no impact. Would do to the traffic volume or safety with Meadow Pond Road and no impact on Route Four. From the added traffic that would be coming out of Knights Pond Road onto Route Four. April of twenty three, Gates access and need for more study of both access points were discussed at the South Berwick Planning Board. May third of twenty three, there was a public hearing on the project and during that public hearing, I pointed out. That in addition to the HOA's safety concern, that the town planning board should consider that the applicant created this access problem through their previous projects. On the land and they now want the town to mitigate the cost of accessing this additional parcel. And if you recall, I showed a video that evening where I described how difficult it is to get in and out of our neighborhood in the winter time now. Let alone if we had thirty five additional homes jumping traffic through it. June of twenty three, Ador Engineering reported that they had a meeting scheduled for June sixth with the South Berwick Water District on their wellhead requirements. Where's that? On the seventh of June of twenty three, the Berwick Planning Board approved full access to this development via Industry Drive. During this planning board on eleven fifteen of twenty three. The board notified the applicant that the South Berwick Planning Board seeks Industry Drive as the only regular access and Meadow Pond would be emergency only. During that meeting, the chair, Mr. Zinsar, asked that a condition be added requiring that the developer to get DOT assurance that the state's permitting. For Route Four access would not be affected by the board's decision. Should they change from the original design? When asked if there would be a need for any update to the current end approvals for Industry Drive, given the new development, the applicant states the current NDOT access permit was fine. February twenty four, notified the applicant at the, of the conditions that will be applied for the project's approval. That was at the planning board meeting on February twenty first. On February twenty second, main DEP requested additional information from the applicant needed for their continuing.
Tony, we're gonna touch out there and let other people speak and then we can come back to you.
I would, thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak on San Bill State?
Hello, thank you for granting me the time to speak. My name is John Mondo. I've lived in town for about ten years, currently reside at Meadow Pond. Just want to start with the traffic impact. So, may Department of Traffic, may Department of Transportation Traffic Impact Study requires. Requirements include a multimodal analysis, meaning a comprehensive review of all modes of transport, including pedestrians and cyclists. The document provided by the developer does not take either of these modes of transport into account, making that document deficient in and of itself. Furthermore, from the town perspective, altering the access point in question is in direct conflict with priorities named in the March twenty twenty four Town Comprehensive Plan. Which states that it is the policy of the town to encourage walking and biking to the greatest extent possible for people of all ages as a. Means of reducing traffic, promoting sustainability and increasing wellness. The city's spending time and resources encouraging these activities and yet now we're looking at traffic studies devoid of these considerations. Currently, my three-year-old daughter can use our streets to play without concern for her safety. We've got three homes in our circle, which is at the end of Meadow Pond and is a throwback to simpler times and it's hard to come by these days. In their traffic report, the developer stated that three hundred thirty one one-way trips would be generated from this development per weekday. Meaning that about nine and a half trips per home. If we compare that traffic to what currently exists in the three homes in near the end of Meadow Pond, the impact of three hundred and thirty additional trips. Is a one thousand one hundred fifty eight percent increase in that area. And it would untenably negatively impact our property value and quality of life. Even a cursory search into the valuation of homes will reveal that the houses located on Paul De Sacks are substantially more valuable than those on the throughway to the tune of up to twenty percent. Recent home sales in the Meadow Pond neighborhood have been in the seven hundred thousand dollar range. As the market continues to rise, that's a conservative guess. With that figure in mind, a twenty percent reduction in value of each of those eighteen homes would cost homeowners a total of over two point five million dollars in loss. In addition to the hardship cost to the homeowners, it would also lead to an ongoing decrease in tax revenue for the town once evaluations go. The town's got an obligation, I believe, to ensure that opening up our dead-end street is in the best interest of all parties. I believe we should mandate that the developer do a comprehensive traffic study inclusive of all modes of transport and all options. The impact study should include the potential for negative impacts to existing residents of Meadow Pond. The developers push for this for no other reason other than the almighty dollar. They would prefer to sell homes that have a better entry view. Ultimately, we now as a town have the ethical choice to make. On one hand, you have the developer that has, should have their standards approved. Is held to the standards that were approved and upgrading to standards of the town and on the other, the town makes our neighborhood. Less safe for children and sets a precedent for devaluing homes of taxpaying residents. The comprehensive plan also makes reference to a multitude of environmental priorities. Thank you.
Public hearing, okay.
Hi, Bill Green, forty-nine Meadow Pond Road. Back in two thousand and five, I bought the second home there. Joe Carr was the developer at the time. He represented the Mick family. He expressed to me that the current entrance in the Meadow Pond Estates was the back end of the development. That the development would continue on, there'd be about fifty houses or so. In that it would bump out on the Route Four and that's where the main entrance would be. At that time, they had multiple options and they weren't sure exactly which option they were gonna choose. But today, nineteen years later, those options are only one and that's industrial ab. Unfortunately, that's just, in my view, is not going to work. Over the past nineteen years, I've been involved in real estate in our area. I've got to know our area pretty good. As a Realtor, I just can't see driving in through industrial ab into, into my home with all the. Heavy-duty construction vehicles that are in play there with the businesses that are now are on industrial ab. Not only is that a major concern, safety concern for the thirty-five homes that are gonna be added. But how about the homes and the children that are currently there? Believe me, they will find a way to investigate that area one way or another and that's a major concern. More recently, there have been more and more accidents on Route Four in that whole general area. Being here the past nineteen years, I've certainly seen an uptick in those accidents. And certainly as, as time goes on and that traffic increases, it becomes harder and harder to exit onto Route Four from, from Knights Pond Road. And, and that, that is becoming more and more of an issue. Just last week, there was a major accident right there. So I certainly would, would urge the board to consider the safety factor here. As a Realtor, I'm certainly all in favor of, of development. We certainly need it. But not for the sake of, of our children and their safety.
Hi, my name is Jackie Busque. I'm also a resident of Meadow Pond Estates. I'm gonna finish what my husband was speaking of and then add on a few additional points. So, the comprehensive plan makes reference to a multitude of environmental priorities. The approved plan has conditions for the developer to address these, but the developer has failed to provide any evidence to satisfy them. Should we choose to amend a final plan, I would request that the planning board reconsider and reopen all other conditions of approval. If final findings are no longer final, we recommend reevaluating all conditions in the plan document before proceeding. And then to piggyback off of Bill Green, we know that housing. Opportunities are limited and we're not saying no to this development. We are saying. No to. Negatively impacting current residents' property values and this isn't an issue that's just going to pertain to Meadow Pond Estates. It's setting a precedent for the entire town as we see more developments propping up. Thank you.
Any further comments?
My name is Roland Busque. I live in South Berwick. I've been a Realtor for forty years. And I own a company called Seacoast Mobile Home Brokers in Summersworth. I've been involved with a lot of people that do development. My major concern, obviously I am impacted, my family does live on that street, just to let you know. However. The, the, the. The cost to the town to have trucks building thirty-five homes on a town-maintained road instead of a construction-grade road. To put that development in is going to be a cost to the town. Because the wear and tear on that road is going to be severe. You cannot have a building of roads to support thirty-five homes. And not think it's going to affect the cost to the town to repair that road. That small association of nineteen homes also has an association where they've developed like a fencing system. A fountain and a pond that was for their use. So thirty-five other homes are going to use that entrance and have the benefit of that luxury. If this developer wants to put it in. Build an entryway off Route Four. You have plenty of room to do it. You have the land, you have the frontage. It's not gonna impact traffic any more than coming off Knights Pond Road. Build the proper road for the development that you want to build for San Bill. Thank you.
Anybody on Zoom? Sure, Jake, go ahead.
Yeah, hey, me doing Jake Rod, who I couldn't make it. I apologize. I'm on Zoom right now, Seven Whitetail Drive. I'm gonna go off of whatever you all said here today and into the board. I appreciate everything everyone does here. But what's going on here in my eyes with the refill of the original application to the new application, okay? This is a diversion. Nothing has been done. From what I'm seeing, from when we started this two or three years ago. To where we are now, nothing. Okay. Now, we're talking originally, it was Industry Drive and a, that was not Meadow Pond, my name is not gonna be the original. Or secondary, very minor. Entry through.
Now, can I interrupt you?
Yeah, sure.
I have to do very difficult time understanding anything you're saying. Are you on a speakerphone perhaps?
I'm on my computer.
Okay, can we head back to you again? Perhaps there's something you could do, but honestly, we can't hide your hair when you're saying things, please.
Can you hear me on one second?
Can you hear me better now?
A little bit better right here, yeah.
Okay. How about now?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So Jake Broad in Seven Whitetail Drive, what I was saying is this. Is that from when we started this two years ago. There has been nothing done. From anyone who wants to do this development to comply. And now the application has been pulled and resubmitted. Originally, it was gonna go through in Industry Drive, which was fine with us. As we all know, the board okayed. The gate coming through our development. Now it's been pulled and now it's gonna go through our development. Okay, tell me if I'm wrong, but I'm not wrong. Secondly. You can't hear me?
No, I can hear you when you are slightly wrong, so keep going.
Well, slightly maybe, but maybe not. Anyway. Coming through, you know, here's the thing, this is a diversion right now, okay? If the traffic on roof boards an issue coming into this development. Through Industry Drive, there is nothing that is gonna change. Going through our development on a Knights Pond Road, taking left on the Route Four. Absolutely nothing. If anything, if anyone's looked recently and I remember Mr. Zinsar. I think a year and a half ago, you even had a complaint because listen, pulling out of that development is an absolute nightmare for me and for my family. And for everybody else in that development. Okay. So. I'd like the board to really understand that. This whole new application coming through. This is a diversion. That's all it is. Originally, they were fine with it. Now they're not. Okay. So everyone should understand that.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom wishing to make comments? Anybody else in the public wishing to make comments? And Tony Wolf, actually going again.
I'll try to be as quick as I can. I've got quite a few things here I still want to get through. Specific to the applicant's request to amend condition six. They now state that Industry Drive, as the access, will require additional traffic study and possible cost. They claim this would create delay and additional expense. Just delay and actual determination with a real impact, not their speculation. This delay and actual determination with a real impact, not their speculation, could have been avoided if the applicant had more timely addressed it when presented eight months previously or at least four months earlier when the conditions were approved. By the way, the main DOT asked for them to provide a traffic study in February of this year. Uh, by both Sewell studies, line of sight for traffic entering Harvey Road from Meadow Pond is just under the recommended uh, or just under the recommended minimum distance. The line of sight for traffic entering Route four from Industry Drive is more than twice the recommended distance. So entering Harvey Road already presents a significant safety concern, as some of the others have said. Um, by our measurement, it's only three hundred and seventy feet line of sight to the right as you uh end to the end of our uh development. Uh, three hundred and fifty is the recommended minimum. Uh, per Sewell's own this uh study, it's a five-hundred-foot requirement for fifty-five speed limit zone on uh coming from Industry Drive under Route four. And the line of sight in both directions there is well over a thousand feet, so twice as much as the minimum required. Okay? There's no requirement that the town ever take over the Sandville Roads as they have stated in their uh appeal. Uh, and given previous concerns raised by the Public Works Office regarding the need for additional equipment and staff, approval for the town to assume responsibility for this development is not given if and when requested. Also, since the South Berwick Planning Board approved the emergency access under Condition six, and that restriction will have likely been in place for an extended time before eighty percent of the homes could be occupied, why would the Town Council be compelled to change that requirement? The amendment request speaks to problems with traffic coming through Meadow Pond and being turned around. And we appreciate the applicant raising that concern, but not allowing a separate South Berwick uh road in Sandville to be named Meadow Pond Road, which would be required to mitigate any uh nine-eleven system conflict and not identifying by name and label the emergency right away will eliminate that concern. So finally, in summary, I, I ask you to consider the HOA's review and comments today regarding the steps taken or not taken regarding this project and the applicant's basis for the amendment to Condition six. In their court filing, the applicant challenges the town's authority to impose Condition six. The town absolutely has a right and responsibility to consider the impact to abutting properties as well as the economic, traffic, and safety impacts of any proposed development. We also wanna point out that since part of their basis for this amendment is the potential delay. May I continue, sir? I promise I'm almost at the end. Since the basis for this amendment is in part the potential delay caused uh that Condition six would create, we ask you specifically consider that even though their progress has not been impeded in any way, to Jake's point. Uh, today, it appears the applicant has failed to take timely action to address several of the other conditions of approval for the development to include at least Conditions two, four, and ten, and that they are only speculating at the possible extra cost and delay associated with Condition six. This project has been under review for two years, and throughout that time, the HOA has respectfully worked with the planning board to make sure our concerns were heard and offered to work with the applicant to find a compromise to the Meadow Pond access. On that, and this point needs to be stressed. When I personally asked, they outright refused to even meet with us to discuss alternative access options, telling me that any adjustment to their plan would threaten their ability to get their state environmental permit approved. To be clear, as approved, Condition six is not what we prefer. But understanding that life is filled with compromise, we've accepted that the board arrived at their final approval with the conditions after careful deliberation, and our HOA has fully accepted the outcome. Considering all of this, it's the opinion of the eighteen residents represented by our HOA that there was no compelling interest for the planning board to approve this requested amendment and that Condition six should remain as originally approved. However, if Condition six is modified in any way, and as mentioned previously, we respectfully request the planning board reopen any and all previous approvals for this project in its entirety to allow for reconsidering, reconsideration of the many additional recommendations we presented for conditions of approval to address the impacts to our neighborhood. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board.
Thank you, Tony. Anybody else? Sir?
Just one small note regarding uh what Mr. Palazzetti said. Um, oh yeah, sorry, Wyatt Page at our engineering representing the applicant. Um, there was at one point a request for a more formal meeting to discuss uh other means of access. Um, and it is my understanding that someone from our office did in fact tell him that the options that the, that uh Meadow Pond State Homeowners Association was asking for were untenable for a variety of reasons, some of which he mentioned. What he neglected to mention is that I had a very lengthy, good-faith meeting with Mr. Palazzetti where I did in fact entertain all of these possibilities, and we talked about it at length more than once. I just want that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all right, the further conversation. I don't see anyone getting up the further comments on Zoom. See now, we're gonna close the couple here in at six fifty-five. And with that being said, we're gonna indeed the regular meeting, we're at same time, six fifty-five. With that being said, but it asks uh that all their willing and able to drive, if they can please. Okay, good evening, everybody. Again, the regular meeting. Uh, I'm gonna suggest to the board for purposes of moving the center, I'm being long, we'll come back in a few minutes. I'm gonna suggest. Yeah, that we go to whole business and we begin to take up the S P twenty-four zero zero two, the home occupation. Is individual, then individual coming back? Uh, okay, very good. So, uh, that being said, uh, does the board have any questions, comments, concerns related to the automotive, I don't know if I can call you on the book, it's supposed to be a small engine, small engine repair on Lord's Lane. We did have a site walk this morning. Uh, we're, the forty of us did attend. Uh, again, clearly in synopsis of that, there were some uh concerns, concerns that were raised at the last evening related to hours of operation. Uh, also still containment. Uh, at the sporting meeting, the sporting meeting, issues related setbacks came up, uh, issues related to water testing came up. Whether or not the survey exists and whether or not we should require a water test. For the record, I understand that the waste materials are brought to Mick. I think this forge, we pursue this application and that we get proof of that. It may some potential issue with the electrical wiring. As well as the overall ownership of the property. Uh, that being said, I do have a question for the applicant, however, uh, that needs to be, you know, considered. How long? God, please come up, I wouldn't even answer this. How long on your property in that area have the fighting's been there? Uh, the engines around?
Yeah, I mean, I've lived there since uh where I'm living right now since ninety-seven, and then I grew up next door, so. That's up there forever, it seems like.
So it's fair to say that
Where I live now, I've lived there since ninety-seven, and I grew up next door, so.
All right, so bringing that into the fact that you have those materials there.
Yeah, I mean, the four wheels and stuff, you know, yeah, yeah.
So there is a potential issue there as it pertains to the whole field, very character perspective. I pulled off on the further conversation of that with this particular quote was nine. Uh, it gives the rest of the board an opportunity. So we had a general synopsis of, um, you know, things, uh, the, the projects for it. I do know there are some standards within the home modification uh, that might always issue. Uh, any board member have, have an issue? And for the record, Zach is now off and Tony is back on. Yes.
All right. Go for it, thank you. Can you hear me? Um, I'm So, um, in general, and I don't, I don't need to be condemn here, but I'm just saying, you know, planning and zoning are about putting uses where we want them, um, and other uses where we don't want them. So this is a great example of, this is in fact an art-free residential neighborhood. It is not one where you put a business. Um, I would want a business next door to me, um, and it would certainly depend on the kind of business, I guess, but it isn't like this. Uh, water repair, engine repair, um, it's just not appropriate for this neighborhood. And if you read the major home occupation statute, notice such as waste discharge, offensive noise, vibrations, smoke dust, odors, heat, flare, traffic, or radiation shall be generated. Um, it also says exterior storage materials and any other exterior, and then the home occupation shall be so located or screened goes not attracting the residential character of the physical building and neighborhood. So with that in mind, I, I personally cannot approve this. Um, you were running basically a garage in a residential neighborhood. You clearly picked off almost all of your neighbors because of it. There's a long history of fighting with the town over it. Um, I don't find actually some of the things you say to be truthful on top of it. I drive by your house all the time, and I see multiple trucks and cars. Um, and that actually didn't start in nineteen ninety-seven either. That started sometime later, and I'm not exactly sure when did it, the last three years, four years, two years, somewhere around there. Um, but I, you know, you hurt the neighbors' concerns, and I, I just it is not appropriate for the kind of business to run. We're all in favor of business, but there's an industrial zone. There is a mixed use zone. There are business zones that count, and that's where you put those kind of uh, in residential.
Can I speak on that, or?
Yes, you may.
Well, for one, they had issued me a permit before, so I, I would assume it was zoned for it where I'm at. And, um, and you're saying that there was, I mean, you told me before there was eight or twelve or whatever vehicles. My driver couldn't even pick four vehicles in it. Or five vehicles in it. I, I'm just saying, I mean, I don't see where you're The uh I don't, and like the noise, you say, the people are talking about noise, been there for fifty years, never got one noise complaint, ever. Not one. I've never been issued a summons for noise, never been spoken to about it.
So you say you've been there fifty years.
I've always worked on such a, when I moved in there in ninety-seven, I was working on stuff, like my own stuff and, you know, friend's stuff. And I've never had a complaint ever, except for now, you know? I don't know why, because like I said, I've never had a complaint.
Right, so didn't the permit that the town issued get pulled?
Yeah, I was never notified of that.
Didn't, wasn't the town working with you to cut down?
Yeah, and I was, and I and I've, and everything I've been told to do, I've been doing above and beyond. I put up fences, I put up extra fences, I've uh cleaned up, put stuff in, in like a, a orderly fashion, like I was told. Everything I've been asked, I've done. I mean, I'm a one, a one person. It's not like I can do everything at once. I still have to make a living and survive. You know, I'm just doing, I'm just doing
You just think it's not really supposed to be in a residential neighborhood, there irritates everybody around it.
Like I said, I've never had a complaint, never. Not ever one written complaint about that. Um, and I do have, um, there was saying something about uh the water setback. It says two hundred and fifty feet. It's actually seventy-five feet.
I think I would need to be looking into further, and there's seventy-five foot resource protection, right?
I have that right here, and then also you stated something about uh where I'm getting rid of the oil and want something writing. I have that here also. I don't know if you wanna see it.
Chris, do you have a survey at all, actually, survey regarding this?
No, I would assume the town would have it, I would make.
I think you brought the waste seven in there.
I do sometimes, but I, I mean, that's, I said both of them. But yeah, front of mind, these parents own that, right, so, and he's over there all the time, so he just takes two of them.
Jenny, do you have, uh, what, what, did I have my numbers backwards in seventy-five and two fifty, the resource protection? We have any verification of that or if you're unnamed, so.
The town, uh, apparently what they're saying is the town acts are wrong. They have it for two hundred and nineteen feet right now to the third building. The problem is the back of the building, the resource protection, and the building can't be there anyway, but it's there. Um, so is it something that the town, uh, can't get into further for you, or right now we don't have a, we don't have an answer on that?
So we're now moving into not informed territory?
Yes.
I was, I mean, I was issued the building permit with them knowing that what I was gonna do because they were complaining about being up front. I mean, if that was the case, I could still work up front then. You understand, you know, like, as far as it's
Whatever any of the current circumstances are, I'm looking at this with the application. I'm not really, I don't know that many. Second, third time I'm actually driving down that road. Um, any other board member have any comments, questions, thoughts?
Yeah, I recall just, um, kinda echoing what Hershey was saying in terms of uh, my contribution of the user home modification, um, that your businesses are kind of look at in our own very good Hershey in terms of, this is the kind of business that is uh, written into the code for that, that particular zone. A lot of the, um, letters, the testimony here tonight, and then also the, the many letters that we got has speak to the traffic and things like that, that are specifically spelled out in uh major home modification section of the statute, so.
No, I did have a question. I know you mentioned that, uh, we didn't have our question about regulation. Yeah, I think that's a whole other set of issues there that I think we probably wanna note this here, but how we approach that, I'm not necessarily sure if this, like, that would be in our purview. I'm just doing the more verification purposes myself and and Okay, very thoughtful concern now, yeah. Like the board's looking at you. Right, I think we're going to, yeah, fair enough, but I think you represented to us, denied affirmatively that the materials that we saw there today have been there in excess of a hundred meters, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, um, in addition to the comments made, uh, oh, it's here. It's on.
Yeah, you're really gonna talk.
Oh, so in addition to the comments made by, by Bill and Hershey regarding the appropriate, uh, use of this residence or this type of business, um, I think there were so many questions regarding the survey and setbacks and where that building is placed and et cetera, that if those questions are answered, and we find out that the building is in the wrong location, setbacks are wrong, et cetera, et cetera. The ability to operate a business is moot because he can't operate from that building if the building is The ability to operate a business is moot because he can't operate from that building if the building is properly placed. If I build into proper standards, electrical, fire safety, et cetera. There's just so many questions need to be answered before. Even silently, this is. Use.
Very, thank you. Jen, be assured, I mean, we're, there's, uh, if you have any applications turned down, it could be applied at any point, right? Yeah, okay, thank you. And the other comments from board members. Given the ordinance. Do you have any questions, comments, or concerns?
The existing garage had building on a, um, direction.
I can answer, yes.
It's, it's hanging on a window, right, on the door of the building.
Hey.
The building permit is. And there was a previous building there before also. Yeah.
There are motions when you vote, wanna do, uh.
Make a motion, both on this final application.
Maybe move, make a vote.
It's fine, fine.
Okay. Uh, who's in favor of, of voting? I'll second, moving on, I say I will second. Yeah, okay, fine. And I like, I'm all in favor of, uh, taking a vote as somebody. Uh, several, uh, uh, okay, through the process, all in favor? All right, we're gonna take a vote, what's the vote, what was the motion? Is it say?
Well. I make a motion that we, we were not approving the application.
You're gonna be approved more than.
Right.
Did your motion deny the application? I think she's trying to say that, like, a lot of people are questioning, it's part of the majority of the board, something to deal with, the definition of a major. Yeah, okay, yeah, I can move denial of the application.
Second.
The moved and seconded, is there any further conversation? Do you know, neighbor, I know, you're active, you're not active, you're good, you're all good, okay? Just wanna get that straight, all in favor to deny. Motion to deny this. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving on, we're gonna continue with old business, MSB twenty four zero zero three. The developer representatives are here tonight, uh, you know. I guess on this one, instead of a couple of levels of expectations that have appeared, you know, for this particular project. Uh, number one, we're gonna go ahead and, and recognize Zach as a full voting member, uh, for purposes with this application. Barry, you're still here, you're able to ask questions, uh, that, whatever you may have. Speaking.
It's open here, Zach.
Okay. And so, uh, we heard a lot of comments tonight about, uh, some proposed actions that if we reopen six, wanna, should reopen everything. I just wanted to be clear. This is an amendment seeking only one item, uh, and the only item up for review tonight is the removal of condition six. Uh, we can't go down the road or will we go down the road at this point, uh, reopen the application, one, I don't believe we can. And two, it's not part of the application. So only item up for review consideration tonight. We may approve it, we may deny it, I have no, barely understanding this at work, where it's gonna go with this particular issue, uh, at this point in time. So just to kind of set the stage, you're only talking about condition six, which is the, uh, the, the. That's true way, uh, there, the access point being available as emergency access zone. So with that being said, uh. Having to really speak to us about what your thoughts are and respond to any, as you see that.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Sandra Gay, Mark Pelago here for, uh, McLand Development. Um, also here tonight is Diane Morabito, who is gonna respond to some of the comments that were made, um, with respect to traffic and also White Page from Atars here as well. And, um, here also to answer any questions the board might have, so that, um, the board is able to hopefully reach a resolution this evening. Um, so. The board is aware of this, but I think there was, sounds like there was some confusion among the public about, um, in appeal and this amendment application. There was an appeal filed, um. I'm sorry. Can't see, uh, so there was an appeal filed, um, following the board's, um, approval. That appeal is just of condition six, that was the only thing that was appealed with respect to that approval. No other conditions were appealed, all other conditions remain conditions of approval, uh, the subdivision and, and need to and will be adhered to. Um, that appeal, um, was filed and then on agreement with the town, that appeal was stayed in the court. Meaning that, um, until, it was actually stayed until, um, August fourteenth. Meaning that the court's not gonna take any action on it, the town doesn't have to file any briefs, Mick doesn't have to file any briefs, everything just stopped. Um, as soon as we got the approval from the court, just stay that. And the reason that we did that, and again, in discussion, on some discussion with the town, or at least the town's attorney, was the idea that, um, we were gonna bring this back as this amendment application. Um, and if it's successful, um, then, um, and, um, successful and, and not appealed. Um, we would be able to, um, not move forward with the appeal that's pending in the court right now, but. I'm going over that really just for clarification for any confusion for any interested people in the public who, I don't know, who maybe were confused about the status of, of this. Um.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, uh, you want to grab, uh, only one right here, please, we'll leave it out there and shut that one off.
It's a button.
Yeah. That's not there, is that one not for that? I can't, uh.
This one comes out of here, so this one comes over.
Is this better?
Yeah.
Um. Did you want me to explain that?
No, you're good.
Um. So, um. Because that is the, it's pending for, um, it's a separate matter, that appeal would say, I'm, I'm really not gonna get into a lot of the issues other than just starting a couple of comments that were recently appealed. This is not the time to try to argue that, you know. If we need to, that would happen in court. All of the comments that were made previously by, uh, butters in that prior approval process are all part of the record, um, fall in front of the board, i- if that needs to move forward. Um, so, yeah, again, the application in front of you right now is simply for a, uh, amendment to remove. Um, that condition, or as we've suggested perhaps to amend that application, um, with an alternate, um, condition six, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. So, the reason for this amendment request is the information and Diane will go over it more, that's talked about in your application packet. That with that, um. That signage in place, preventing, um, anything but emergency access through the subdivision. Uh, M dot is gonna be requiring a lot more study and probably a turning, um, lane on Ford, and Diane will talk to that a little bit more. The. There was discussion, um, when this was approved with conditions previously, uh, along with even board members about the possibility that that sign would be temporary. There's no guarantees that the town will accept those roads once eighty percent of the lots sold, we understand that. On the other hand, the town could accept those roads that have to wait for some later time. Um, in which case, the indication, I believe, has been that the likely, the most signs would be. Um. I do, I think. And we saw so, one of the comments on it. About the public area portion, um, I just do wanna take a step back and I, I appreciate it, I'm a owner, I understand. Um, however, when the first two phases of metal lane were approved, and this was always in record last time, um, there was a requirement by this board, different board members, but this board, that. Access be allowed, uh, in fact, not allowed, it was required to have a connector between those and into what. What it was referred to, for part of that application process, as phase three of the metal point development, phase three is sin. So, um, the, it was always in record, it was always recorded in lands, it was always there, um, that there would be a connection to this development, I just. Wanted to, again, make that point. Um. So, you know, one of the, uh, one of the points that, um, was raised in the application is, um. The issue of most people who now today access, um, instructions, how, people don't use paper maps, they get on GIS, and that the GIS system, and they direct them, uh, to get into somebody's property. For anybody going to say, it's gonna direct them down metal pond. That's, that's what GIS will do. You know, they'll get to the end, they'll hit a sign saying, uh, you know, no, they're reversed vehicles only, they're gonna have to turn around, drive back up the metal pond. And then try to figure out a different way to get to the other side of that short connector, a little bit to get into Sanville. So, aside from the, the costs associated that Diane will talk more about, this is just a practical, um, practical reason to do this. So, um. You know, I had mentioned that. You know, one possibility is to amend condition six, and, um, certainly, it was talked about, um. That, and the suggestion would be that, um, rather than have signage there at the end of Industry Drive, or Industry Drive enters into metal pond. They have signage that says no danger class, purpose of they can keep the construction vehicles out of, um, going through Sanville, through metal pond, in order to get up to where we know on the other side. So if the board is at all inclined to amend, um, condition six, that's. A, yeah, art recommendation for what it ended up like. Um. Despite a couple of comments, just very quickly. You, you, during, Lord, I know you hear this all the time, and I know that people feel this way a lot, but every new development does not devalue property. And if you're going to. Um, ask the board to consider that, there needs to be some part of, there needs to be a appraisal, before and after appraisal. Your, your property's worth this now, if this development goes in your property, it's gonna be worth X. I don't believe that they would find that here at all, but there isn't anything like that before the board to suggest that property values will be diminished by allowing this development forward. Um. And, and, and I thank the chair for this comment, I, a couple of times I have written down that this application before you was strictly for amendment, um, of condition six, since there was no appeal of any part of that, uh, approval, other than our appeal, and again, that appeal. It's just on condition six, that appeal, by the way, is staying until April fourteenth, um, when I bring it to the town, so, um. Diane and while you're here, hopefully the board can get whatever answers it needs to act tonight, so that we can either, um, move forward with appeal or, or hopefully not. But, oh, that's all I have, I do wanna turn it over to Diane unless you have any questions.
I have a quick question, yeah, April fourteenth is when it's.
August.
August, okay. I thought, I thought you said, I thought you said August earlier and then April.
No, I said, well, I'm, it's the key.
August fourteen.
Everything on the game.
Yeah, August fourteen.
August fourteen.
Thank you. So you made. Andrew, you made reference earlier in the beginning, you know, about the whether or not the town accepts it, they may, they may not. Uh, should they accept it, uh, they could, this board should know and the public should know. Uh, it's a really definitely time where the control of that road would fall to town council, would take away from us. And definitely, uh, town council, if they make a public road, uh, could very well say, who decided to do it correctly? So I just wanna throw that out there so everybody's fully aware, uh, at this point in time that regardless, I don't know. What we're gonna do tonight, uh, will you edit it out, uh, just so you're, uh, as we move through the process.
If I just comment on that, so that was a discussion that we had, so. You know, in the event, and, and it did come up, um, in the fire approval process, and eventually that sign could come down, unfortunately, we're faced right now with the predicament, um, on M dot and, and the busts and the, you know, the. Cost in China, that's so entertaining, so we don't have, there isn't the luxury of waiting until eighty percent of the lots is sold and then taking side now. We need to get over M dot before we can start, and, uh, if M dot requires a turning lane, seriously, the viability of this project was. That's significant.
I do think, uh. The concerns, you know. Gonna speak for myself, but I believe. In prior conversations over the prior two years. Uh, I've seen multiple iterations of the, you know, development. Originally, there was a gate down at Industry Drive. That, there, gone, there's a station about that, anyway, that's where we are, where we are, but I think, you know. As we talk about condition six. I think we need to acknowledge, and I do wanna hear from Diane, and you said, uh, because I think. Condition six is surrounding the traffic, the traffic, etc. Uh, personally, as one board member, if, if this board does want to move down the road, but remove in condition six. I feel that in the process, we somewhat glanced over, uh, a lot of those traffic concerns, uh, from the residents, you know, metal pond. And I think that, you know, like something the board is, is interesting, we. Could go back, familiarize ourselves with that, because again, really, condition six, it's kind of, um, trap. Uh, yeah, so I guess with that being said, if there is no other comments at this point from the board. Should we give it over to, uh. Yeah, yeah, Zach, go ahead. This. Open hearing, yeah, all just for, for, for sure. Uh, just clarification, no matter what the new development, going to be metal pond road. That's the name of the road.
I don't.
Anywhere near where.
You know, I haven't.
Or is industry going to be?
No, it's, it's got a different name, the road, the road in Sanville, you know, it's.
That was brought up. It should, it should be, and I know there was general conversation, I'll go back in the videos, there was a lot of conversation way back then, that it should not be called metal. Because there is already existing H O A over there, there could be some other issue, the public road versus the private road, that need that at this point. Uh, so I do know the request was, and you call it something different, and that came specifically from someone over here, that is, you're getting.
It is.
It's getting too confusing, right?
It actually, it is called, that, that did come up, um, the, Atar, that time went in and renamed all the streets and they are, they're not.
Okay. Problem solved. Thank you.
Diane Morabito from Seoul, I did all traffic work on this. Um, the important thing, I think, is originally, when I first looked at this, my recommendation was that all access or primary access should be metal pond road. Um, just to keep industrial truck traffic separate from residential. Um, this thirty five lot subdivision is gonna generate one hundred and sixty five round trips per day. Twenty six one-way trips in the AM peak hour, which is seven coming in, the nineteen meeting, and then the PM peak hour. The heaviest hour of the day, it's thirty five one-way trips. Twenty two entering the subdivision and thirteen accident. Um. Given that no, did traffic counts at the metal pond road, the ninth pond road intersection, the level of service there is A. The level of service at all interior intersections is level of service A, so there are no congestion concerns. So the remainder, we're gonna be focused upon safety. There are no high crash locations anywhere in the area, and the site distances exceed the recommended minimums. Um, somebody said they did not, but. What was measured by Atar and surveyed was a minimum of four hundred feet from the metal pond road to the left and four twenty five to the right, where the recommended is three hundred and fifty feet. So the site distances exceed the standard, so for this level of traffic. There's no level service concerns, and there's no safety concerns because.
There's no level service concerns and there's no safety concerns because. There are no high crash locations and we exceed site distance requirements. Um, some of the things that were said to Monday was that is testified that didn't need a DOT permit. Well, we do not need, is a traffic movement permit, because we are fewer than hundred trips. But if you're gonna use industrial drive or industry drive as our primary drive, we do need to modify that entrance permit. Anytime you increase trips on any entrance, we technically need to modify their entrance permit. And we never said that we didn't need to do that. And that's where. DOT is now saying, well, if you're gonna volume traffic use that, we want you to do a traffic study focused only on the left turn lane requirement. Because of the crashes that have been happening on Route Four. But we're gonna have a lot more traffic entering there. We want to know if a turn lane is warranted. And whenever you do a study, if a turn lane is warranted, rebuild it. So that is what we were hoping to get away from. Um, so there is extra cost to do that traffic study. Um, somebody mentioned a multi-mobility required. That's only if you need a traffic movement permit. There's no multi-mobility analysis required for this case. And that pretty much summarizes everything, but I'm happy to take questions.
I do have a view. They may not make sense.
Okay.
Uh, I'm going to try to articulate it as clearly as I can. So back to the beginning. Analyze the, uh, traffic. On the existing metal pond and the proposed subdivision. And your analysis was shut it down at Industry Drive. And as long as we push them all out to Lake Pond or Harvey Road. Then no actual traffic permit is needed.
No, no entrance permit, no traffic movement permit is needed anyway, but no entrance permit modification.
Because they're not exiting the.
Correct. They're accidenting the town road.
Yeah, and so. Okay. Different clarification, that was based on just wanting to try to not visit Industry Road.
Correct. Business is gonna be emergency.
Okay.
So that would be emergency, only N T O two would not require a study for an emergency access.
So let's talk something. I have a set of questions. I did get your updated letter. I didn't read it. I just wanted to make sure that I understand it. Okay, hang on. So the board implemented condition six that said, no metal pond, go out Industry Drive. DOT is saying timeout, you're changing it. Not only does that require entrance permit.
Mo- patient.
Water station. Entrance permit, but also would require a T and P?
No, they want a traffic study.
A traffic.
Who as part of that entrance permit.
They haven't determined whether or not a traffic.
No, which determines whether or not a left turn lane will be required, could be built. That's what they're concerned with is whether or not you need a left turn lane to slow that traffic, giving you speeds on the board.
Now. You mentioned earlier something to the effect of about a hundred cars, it triggers something.
Can't be.
Yeah, but you then said earlier that there's a hundred and sixty-five round trips per day.
A hundred peak hours trips. Peak hour trips is what requires a T and P. And hour trips with thirty-five, well under.
Yeah, okay, understood. And so. Can you then, just to make sure that I understand, so if we maintain. Condition six. DOT says you need to modify your constraints and then study above the answer.
Your traffic study to see the left turn lane is warranted.
And the traffic movement permit is not needed because of the volume and.
Correct, either way.
What happens if condition six is lifted and they go out both ends? What does the U T say in that?
I think the number, we had, because we did traffic counts at existing, we were able to project how many trips come. Oh, via industry versus come Harton Road and Nice Pond Road. And I think the numbers of the entrances is small enough, they're probably not gonna require a traffic impact study for that small increase in tracks.
Do you have, go ahead. Yeah, I'm just gonna keep going.
I gotta do it while I remember what I wanted to ask. Is there any means to predict what would happen if you do a traffic study and what, what would be the thing that would trigger a left and currently required?
The requirement for left turn lane is based upon three factors. One, it's the level of traffic on. Before, the approaching volume, the percent less in that volume, and then the opposing volume, and also the speed. So it's a combination of all those factors. So I can't really forget. I know the speed is high, and when the speed is high. The level of trips that were in the turn lane is not that great. But we don't have a kind of industrial, an industry drive, so I really don't know. But my gut is it doesn't take a lot on that type of high-speed facility, the warrant to let you leave. So. It's a good possibility we were required to look again in all of our traffic news that, that we would be electrically warned. But we haven't done that study yet because. We didn't want to go there.
Can you remind me, what is the speed limit on?
Fifteen or fifty-five, yeah.
Oh, but. I don't know that there's any intervening traffic exits or on-ramps between the proposed Industry Drive and Harvey link. There's nights on as. Wonder how much difference it's going to be. More houses in that area is going to increase left turns, whether it's night pond or.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you have access to full bends, you will projecting. Two additional left turns out of Industry Drive and seven entering left turns of Industry Drive, um. With access to full bends, it'd be two left turns on the Nice Pond Road. Additional, we'll worry about what's there today.
This may not be a question for you, Diane, or you can answer if you want, or maybe for ATAR or Sandville in particular. Did you give any consideration as I, uh. In the review process on my end, can't speak for any other board members. You know, we considered the record that was submitted from the homeowners association related to. Potential safety issues, which I use and are legitimate. Uh, that road, uh, is very, very windy. Uh, I can see where those concerns would arrive from with adding, uh, the additional homes. Not in the San Bill portion. So with the review process, giving a consideration, one, about the only issue, uh. Uh, or conclusion that I came to is by reducing and, and, and restricting that right of way to. Uh, go through traffic that only alleviated the concerns of the butters, but also. A clearly elevated safety concerns. Therefore. My portion of the review, so to speak, you know, did not go down and look at what other traffic common measures. Or what other items might need to be done to the existing metal pond. Uh, to one, answer some of the concerns, the concerns which are legitimate. I understand the traffic permit process is a numbers aid, uh, in sight distance. I understand that, but from a practical perspective, I do know that I mentioned in prior meeting that even if you were to do this. I also have issues that we didn't really look at, and I understand that maybe. A numbers issue that says you don't have to look at it, but the vehicles exiting onto and helping you with the nice pond or Harvey. I always get though, it's nice, it's hard on me. Harvey going.
Right, yeah, nice pond of the left.
Yeah, so, um, pulling out of Nice Pond, our federal. You know, while they have the technical site distances. People kind of whizzing down over that hill, doesn't really need a lot of times coming down on the left if you're pulling out and taking the left. And on the right-hand side, with all of the brush that's over on the right-hand side, they kind of whipping around that corner. It really does not need a lot of reaction time. Now, I would suggest you probably have done your homework and said, oh, there's no accidents there. Can't speak to that, but I would say you're probably not far off. However, uh, it is a safety issue from my perspective. When I did go out there, my daughter is driving, speed around, went out there, there were kids running all around. Uh, out there, uh, and so I do see some issues, and I guess my question would be. There was a conversation prior, uh, about finding an alternative access. I don't need to go down that road, uh, because we already did talk about it, and that determination increased that conclusion. But part of that was also at that point in time, uh, there was a development going in. In conjunction with this theoretically, I don't know where that ended up in North Berlin. And I don't know if that is over where we can go straight. That's what I heard. Uh, whether or not that development actually went through the process. I don't know whether it was denied, I don't know, it's denied. Are there other opportunities to look at? Uh, for access. And I just, you know, not, not a, you don't need to say what you look at. I'm just kind of curious. How, how, how would you have us address the issues associated with. Safety related to the residents that are there now and in the future, uh, with, with that particular road. And, and any thoughts? I'm just kind of curious. I'm trying to make an educated decision here on whether or not we, from my perspective, whether or not that, uh. Throughway be moved to make two left, you know, that's kind of a question I have.
One thought I have is the windy nature and the narrow nature is traffic coming in itself. And, and I mean, so basically that is not gonna let it become a speedway. I mean, you can't drive very fast through there. So that's just one thought. You could add additional, you know, speed bumps or something, even slow traffic further. Um, but that's the traffic coming component in that way. Why is it for the accents?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if you need that other measures potentially out there and they're either dismissed or. Or something. So, so to reiterate the question, just to make sure I understand. So you're asking about other options for mitigation of. Uh, the danger to pedestrians or are you asking about means of access?
I'm talking about the, what I'll call the particular safety with individuals as well as its impact on pedestrian safety. Uh, given the nature of that road being very, very windy, I just understand Diane said the nature of the road itself would theoretically come. However, still having trouble getting over that, you know. If we keep that area alone there, right, D M T has said we have enough of a problem. Where we want a traffic study to determine this left-hand lane because of Route Four. But there was a comment earlier on at the meeting, and I know I'm going in a lot of different directions. I know it. But we also heard earlier on that at the end of the day, all of those cars are still going back up to Route Four, coming in Route Four down Nice Pond Road. And so i- it's kind of like, I mean, just pushing it onto the town road and saying, oh, town road will be deal. Uh, so. Broadly, my question would be this, are there other alternatives or other items that you're willing to entertain? For traffic common or to address the safety concerns of the residents out there on that road, metal pond right now, as addressed prior in the record?
So we're talking about specifically. Have we looked into methods to assuage potential concerns on the existing metal pond road? Should condition six be lifted, amended, what have you?
Yes.
Okay, that question I understand. Um, we haven't been required to look into anything of that sort. Um. I mean, I don't really think, at this point, we haven't been asked to, to my understanding, up until this point, we've heard the concerns, they're on the record. Um, I certainly have not seen any particular, um. You know, requests in any official, official capacity for us to look into anything like that. I mean, I'm sure it's something that could be considered, but. I mean. So, go ahead.
Yeah, why, and many meetings have gone because this has gone twice a time. Uh, the reference was made to other restrictions with the coordinates. Yeah, I'm not looking to push on the spot because you don't know, uh, the code. Recite it for a chapter at first, but there is this section, one twenty-one forty-four, section G. Uh, and that really gets to part of this issue here, and I'm gonna read it to you. All streets in the subdivision shall be still designed. That in the opinion of the board, they will provide safe vehicular travel while discouraging movement of through traffic. You have any thoughts on that? I'm hoping this doesn't come as a surprise. It has been talked about in the middle. That's. Yeah, I'm sure you have taken an opportunity to prove to the entire audience. I know, I, I, it's time. You have any thoughts on that? Um, and if you don't, that's okay, because, you know, we won't come to a. Just trying to help educate everybody here as we move forward.
So, I mean, as far as, I mean, to my limited understanding of things. Because we certainly looked into everything in the San Bill portion of it. Um. All of the butters here tonight have made quite a large point, which, you know, the record and the legal state of things would agree. These are separate subdivisions. They're on separate roads. They're seeking to have them be entirely separated roads. In fact. They're, um, they're on different parcels. They have different homeowners associations. We. At least to my, and I would defer to Sandy on this one. I'm not sure what legal bounds we have to. Make changes on metal pond to state. I certainly would not personally be seeking to, you know, make these changes without. Speaking with all of the butters and, you know, all of all the being discussed with you, with you folks. Um, I'm not really sure what ability we have to do things on the metal pond and.
Yeah, well, I guess what I'm suggesting is that provision would seem to. In one way, shape or form, without being quoted as contradictory, a section would seem to. So, did you, did you look at it? Do you have a thought on it?
I, I have some thought. I mean, just in terms of, again, it's windy, but it's not. It's narrowish, but it's not too narrow, but it's not safe for two-way traffic. There is sidewalk along it, so there is safe places for pedestrians. So. I mean, honestly, and there's certainly, it is a public road, so traffic coming could be out, even if that's something that the board wanted. Like if you speed bumps to make sure that traffic is moving slower. Um, so I mean, it is a public road, there is opportunity to make some minor modifications to it if the board so chose.
Any work number, have any, uh, certain others?
Thank you very much. Um, so a couple of things, um, the, you know. Everybody lives in a wrong place. I appreciate it. Everybody lives in a wrong, someplace, phone someplace. I appreciate it. I'm gonna go back to, this was originally designed as a three-phase development. The board at the time required the deeds to show and plans to show. That it would be connected, so it would not be a dead-end called a static band. Um, and, and so now coming back and assist the third phase is called San Bill. Um, but that was planned way ahead of time by this, this board. In different members, but this board and by the developer. Um. If there's traffic moving too fast on the fine line, I see there sidewalks there, there's things that's following issues in winter. Um, that's an enforcement issue. That's a home issue. The developers in San Bill can't fix that enforcement issue. That's something for the town to take care of. If traffic is moving too fast on a nice. If traffic is moving too fast on a night, you know, what that is or rush needs to get cut. That's an enforcement issue. That's something the town needs to take care of. That's not something this developer, this subdivision. Is responsible for. This developer, this subdivision, um, provided a plan and the plan met the requirements of the town. I appreciate the section that you said, and why it said that these are separate roads designed safely in separate phases of development in order to run. There's also parts of the subdivision, so I was looking for it. I apologize that I think it's actually in the appeal. Um, that require, um, the board to consider connections, which the board did do. In first two phases of development, it's good planning to have. Traffic through and not have long dead end cul-de-sacs. It's. It's more efficient for fire and safety and it's just makes more sense for people moving in and out, not having to. In this case, you know, in order to get into their self-rearing at home, drive through two other towns and around, you know. And have to use highway that's fifty-five miles an hour in order to turn into the street to their homes. So, um, I appreciate what you're saying. I appreciate what I've always very respectfully appreciated what the homeowner say. Um, but some of these things go beyond scope of what this plan is. They're, we can't, they can't. New development cannot fix, um. Enforcing traffic issues that they exist on metal pond or late on or.
Thank you. So that gets back to. I'm talking to the board now, so. That kind of gets back to the concept of if we. Keep the, uh, that right of way sign that's known as moving. That's going to force the developer to get the traffic study. It really does kind of be one of the main issues here. You don't like it, but then you gotta get the study.
I think it's not so much the study, but it's the. Burning of the left turn lane in the term that it'd be more, if it turns out to be more. So it's not so much the study, although the study will slow things down.
So.
One of the comments, two, I mean, just we do have the. Trip assignments assuming access to go with points. And twelve of those thirty-five to four trips, so two in from Harvey Road. So. To force that traffic down on the high speed and four, when they're destined. You know, come out metal pond road and take a right. It, it just doesn't make a lot of sense, but from a traffic perspective, enforcing. I mean, good planning says you should interconnect your subdivisions and not force them on the major lines.
Yeah, I still see a lot of issues coming back as some of the board is sharing with the. I don't face like some dice. So. We can deny, deny the application. And that would be the original, I'm in the back and stand in our perspective, they can then continue with the appeal. And. Not entirely sure what's leading to happen if we do deny it, does that take? That would technically force them to do a study provided they want to move forward. I guess my question would be, uh, the legal one. If it is denied, they can go back and continue the appeal process here. We may never get that traffic study that this board wants. So if, if, uh, because they're asking to lift condition six, which is really come as on the traffic. You know. And I don't know where the word is. That the denial should be. Based on a couple of factors, one of which. So back of. Efficient data on which to reach, whether conclusions, naming the traffic studies. So one. I would suggest the one twenty-one forty-four G. I understand what they're suggesting about the different roads, but it is at the end of the day, they're connecting them. Maybe that will hold up. I don't know. Plain in terms, we could say it would. Uh, but also I think if. Uh, or denies that. We want to have in there something related to the traffic study as well, so that. We can guarantee that that would be done if we're doesn't want to live that construction. Are we? See who we are. Are we allowed to? Check. The amended proposal. And propose another or approved it ending the traffic study or is that something that's not even? Well, you, you, I think you could impose a traffic study. Then ask them to do that tonight, but you know. Fairness to the offense. I'm going to ask everybody to kind of think ahead or think to yourself. You know, there's something that you foresee denying anyway. I would be asking you to do that at the end of the day. You're going to go ahead and get it. It's going to come back for further deliberation just to be turned down on any. Uh. You know, I guess how about the mindset if the board doesn't want to grant. To say we're not granted again. One twenty-one forty-four G and also the fact that there's no traffic study to. Uh, that which means the lie of the base data. To say that particular throughway should be restricted, should be, but. I don't know. I'm all, I mean, I'm open to other thoughts on it. I guess what I'm saying is if you just say, hey, deny it. You know, they can go on the P or the original set of conditions, conditions sets. Who knows what a board could do. I just don't want to lose the opportunity with however to get the. The traffic study, which. I understand it's a money issue, but I think, you know, there is. There are, in my view, you know. Traffic issues perhaps not necessarily based on the numbers. Uh, but I do see and think that there are linked to the traffic issue with the existing metal pond pedestrian safety issues. And I think that we're going to say yes, but that we should have these bit of traffic so that they can understand. What the impact is going to be on the other.
Can you clarify what traffic? I know we're talking about.
I know I'm using this in the next, the, the, the entrance permit, the study for the fourth industry drive. Not, not a traffic movement permit, but the left-hand side.
So you're talking about the roof or?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, just, uh, just to be clear, um, we don't have the luxury at that time to stay in the court. So the amount of time it would take to do a traffic study, the appeal would need to improve. Um, so.
Have you given to the other application? Have you got all those other conditions with, uh, reaching the?
They're all positions of approval, such that you have to be approved there and they will. And I just wanted to, um, I did find that I have. Hopefully a current ordinance, but this is your subdivision section. So I just wanted to say that, um, one twenty-one forty-four. On C, the design of streets shall provide proper continuation streets from adjacent subdivisions that have built-up areas. And proper projection streets into adjacent subdivision and then move it land. The subdivision, that's a s- street specifications in your subdivision ordinance that requires the continuation between developments.
And. I'm not hearing where the question is. I, I hear you're like, oh, I'm sorry. No, sure, the rest of the words. I didn't think of being, should, please pay attention to the fact that like we do have a traffic studying. Based on using both of those entrances that do show it will be saved. Um, if we were to deny that. And I, I did like, I, I did really like the solution I come up with. Uh, to both of P U S, the homeowners association. Uh, but if that is not an option, I don't see that, you know, the reason not to. Be amended because. You know, it's. We have a study to say it is permitted by the city. And then there's the application they have provided to us, you know, may never be, they didn't exhaust the blue top grill. I don't know how everyone else is about it, but ready to put it. And it's. Right, yeah, I understand what you're saying. I also think George does give us a lot of, you know, some too. Concerns. I do, I, and I do, I, I, I'm not saying you're not, yeah. So I'm inclined to bring this to the end as well. Is there, does anybody want to make a motion? Five times. I don't like both ways. Not the, uh, shy.
Something sticks in my mind though. Uh, you know, I looked at this and, and, and a lot of the discussions, I think, very good said this, this for the last two years. You know, we, we thought we had a solution that would be defined by a length that is planned before, so. Less digging, if you will, or, or, or looking at concerns that brought up, uh, in, in the previous. Proposal, uh, the traffic issue. You know, one thing that sticks in my mind, I, I, I just throw it out there and I'm not saying that it helps one way or the other, but. Uh. Reduction in traffic is a free concern. You don't want people coming through your, uh. The last statement six was, uh. You know, being trucks and no through access. Uh, we never really looked at, and I think private could, we probably got a solution with, uh, with one way. Only into the new. Uh, development from the. The, uh, uh, original development. It doesn't give rid of all the traffic, but. Uh, certainly keeps less of the traffic turning back into industry, I don't know.
And I can't say that that's, that's not a decision we can make today. I don't even know, but.
The, the, the boards are down to make.
Yeah.
That's what is discussed.
And then make, uh, I will, I guess I will entertain a comment on this, but typically we do allow people to say it obviously. And I, I won't go into, cause Lord knows you give me a lot of time. I mean, Tony fellas Eddie. My mic, Tony fellas Eddie metal pond estates. So a couple of things. Keep talking about phase three. There is no phase three. Go back and look at all the, uh, minutes from the previous discussions about phase one and two. There is no discussion phase three. Okay, uh. Also, there's con- conversation about the fact that this should be, all these developments should be interconnected. You know, we shouldn't have a dead end. The planning board approved metal pond phase one and two with a waiver on the length of a cul-de-sac. The normal length for a cul-de-sac is six hundred feet. This planning board approved metal pond for two hundred and twenty, two thousand, two hundred and fifty foot. Length for those two cul-de-sacs. Clearly there was an expectation that that was going to be the end of it and they've extended on that bar. The other thing, uh, in specific to, you know, article one twenty-one and the true traffic. Okay, it's entire, there's a reason for that. There's an entirely different. Uh, attitude from drivers coming through their neighborhood versus coming through a right way to get where they're going. You know, people in our neighborhood, the eighteen residents that are there, we look out for each other. We look out for the children. Okay, that are in the street riding their bikes, learning how to ride their bikes, and we're not just trying to get there. And that's the difference. And I believe that's why one twenty-one is written the way it is because they don't want to create through traffic ways. That are going to become thoroughbears, you know, from one neighborhood to get out. So. Thank you.
I, I don't really think I have a lot to add in this especially. I think, I think Greg covered quite a good bit, um. And I, I'd like to remind us all that, you know, um, the weekend to bend so many ordinance, um, that we've all. It's an overhaul, so plain. Um, we do have to follow the rules of them and what it'd be like if they're not, so. Not to sound harsh, but my concern in putting in these. This sort of emergency only access was, though it did help the abutters, it was less about that and more about safety issues. So, um, I appreciate how difficult it is to have something like this happen. Um, we get to develop land. We all agree where the housing prices need new development. I myself developed housing, so I understand that need, um. And sometimes it just sort of sucks that it might be next to you in your neighborhood. I rarely drive through Old Mill and I need to go to the transfer station. Um, I come to a full stop at every stop sign and I follow the speeding laws. I have to say people who live there. Often do not, it seems to me, so I can't really speak to what's going on at metal pond and traffic. But, um, my main concern was that this project came in presented as industry, industry drive as their main entry. And was evaluated in that way. Oh, yes, it was actually. And when the civil engineer spoke to that, we spent hours and hours with the Berwick planning board. Discussing the safety issues around having traffic come through in industrial area. And whether it would be completely safe. So, so, um, I am inclined to let the course, the jury make this.
Also, me to verify that. Um, the original plan was to use industry drive and to have a gate. Emergency access only. That was the discussion with the other board. It was never originally proposed that say the full. Access. So, uh, that was, that was the original plan. That was, and Diane talked about it, some of the traffic.
And, and that might have been on your actual plans, but what was presented and discussed. It was industry drive that was something primary. And so we asked several times, I see you shaking your heads. But I'd be happy to go through the record. I'd be happy to go through the video and prove to you that what is presented, that was often discussed as the primary access. And in fact, when we had our sidewalk, we walked down into your drive. We didn't walk into metal pond road. Why is that? If that was not going to be primary ends. Why did we come in through that way? And that was sessions we had, what I was told in the front. And that's how I dealt with this project for the last couple of years, actually. And then it seemed there was some, at the very end, a change of heart that now this wouldn't be the primary answer.
And I'm, I'm not, I definitely do not. But as long as I've been involved in this project, and it hasn't been since day one, but it's been for quite a while now. Um, my, at the absolute very first, and it is on the plans and the only discussions that I am aware of. The original discussions with the industry God, instead of we have, in fact, we, we showed a gate, had a gate on it. We discussed it with the board planning board. It had a gate and we talked about emergency. And so. I wasn't here before that, but that's my own understanding of all that plan.
Thank you. Any word members have, uh, the safety further talked?
Go ahead. I'll let you speak. All, I'll be, I'll be quick. I just wanted to point out, I have not been here for the entire duration of this project either. When I did come onto this project, the first part of my involvement with this was when the town had asked us to provide. Because we initially proposed this just as a cluster subdivision, town ordinance mandated that we also provide. We have, we must also provide a set of plans for the conventional subdivision layout. I was the one who did the.
I was the one who did the design for the conventional subdivision layout, because originally it was just a cluster plan. At that time, it was a gated access. It was not presented as a primary means of access. I wrote the words on plan. I can't speak for what happened at the meetings prior to that. I believe what Hershey is saying was on the record. I'm sure she remembers it correctly. But what I can speak to is that from an engineering perspective, when I came onto this project, it was not a primary means of access. I can't speak for what the writings at the time said, but it's my understanding this was originally proposed as primarily through metal pond drive. And it did, and then at some point, it's coming in and out. Uh, yeah, um, and at some point in all of this, we had to consider two primary means of access. And now we've reached this whole point with condition six, where now we've limited it, or or we it was sought as a condition of approval to limit it to the one means of access and one emergency means of access. And I just, and I'm not, I'm not here to argue. I believe that you remember what you remember and you heard what you heard, and that the record reflects what it does. All I'm saying is my limited understanding of the full history of this project. Um, and what I've had to go back and read about indicates that when I came on, it was just the one, but that's, I'm just stating that, I have nothing else to add.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Comment to that, though I think Hershey has a very valid point, that when we did the site walk, we were taken through industry drive. That was essentially a gated block thing, it's only going to be opened up, that we should have gone through. Seeing the full development, do you drag through?
Do you happen to remember how far after, when I came on and we did the conventional plan, when there was a gate, that was? Because I do.
It was a while.
It was approximately eleven months.
Yeah.
Yes, a lot changed between those two times, and I I fully.
Conversation with looking at industry driver.
Yeah, yeah, no, I I understand. There was lots of discussion about industry, we all remember how long, how much it's been discussed, but. And I, and for the record, I don't, we don't choose, to my understanding, where the sidewalk begins. I've, maybe I'm mistaken on that one, but I certainly had no part in selecting industry drive. As where we started our site walk.
Yeah, I I still, I I want to throw out a hypothetical here, because I'm looking at your uh, your application in June twenty. And it says, uh, you know, Mick would agree to an amendment, condition six, the entrance to industry, uh, no through trucks. You know, rather than just, we'd be getting rid of it. Uh, and this is completely hypothetical, I don't know where we're going, if we change anyone on the planning board mind, but. Uh, what society said one way. That's certainly a lot more than no through truck.
I mean, I, I'm gonna have to defer that one to Diane, but as a non-traffic expert and not the person that did our traffic study, it's my understanding that that was.
Required.
Say again.
Are you saying, are you suggesting it would require traffic?
No, sorry, I I don't know, but I, all I know is that our present traffic analysis that we have right now is not reflective of. A one-way path that needs of access. It's my understanding, and Diane will corroborate, that our current traffic analysis, all the traffic data that we have, the report. Is with regards to two full unfettered means of access, and I'll let her speak to that if she wishes.
All right, I'll put a limit to the conversation. It's important. All right. I'm inclined to agree with Hershey, but of course, aside, I'll make a motion to deny the application. The move is seconded for their conversation.
Uh, just that, I I think that to Hershey's point, you know, this is one of the issues with having. Part of this is back, this is back, and you know, there's turnover in the staff, this isn't uh slight on anybody, it's only work on the project while you're here, but. You know, when you've got multiple people doing different designs and and stuff, and we're operating kind of under one set of. Things and assumptions, then it kind of changes that way, so. If that muddies the waters here in terms of what we're operating under, what's kind of worse, so.
Yeah, and my comments about letting the course adjudicate this is not um a slight by any means on anyone here. I just, I feel like at this point, um, it's beyond us to sort of really. Maybe understand every issue and the history of all of it, and so it might be better to subdue that thing.
Just to pace the temperature, right? First, just an alternate motion to approve, and then uh to prove the application in the the condition six to show that you would require. A um posted no trucks, no through air on both sides of the street. Again, it was so there. Um, whatever you agree, well, I'm trying to give us an option if we move forward. Rather than just object of just denying it, so, but it's been suggested by representatives over here that the instead of doing a. No, uh, no entrance waiting in there, that instead you would no trucks, no through traffic. Saturday. On those public roads, both minimize construction traffic and continue subdivision with uh base. And to minimize any through traffic there. I just want to see what everyone else's support thinks, and use an option for. We don't, we don't have the most, we don't have the votes.
So the one issue is a vote, uh, uh, motions made and seconded, and so one of us would need to make an amendment to that. Uh, before we withdraw the motion. Happy to have a conversation, not apparently, sure I am so mistaken. So, no through traffic. I think what if they're the same is there's no knowledge that still go through, correct? What's up? The people in the development that still go through, but no through traffic cutting around the road. Yeah, is that what you're saying? So.
Yeah, no trucks, yeah. Or trucks should be at home. I think that was disguised as something. Yeah, and I'm not going to withdraw my motion, and Hershey's not going to, so we're going to call the question on the motion again, which is to deny the application. All goes for favor. Are you interrupting? I can see. But so your vote here, who can deny it? Okay, four against one opposed. Thank you, I oppose that. We had all voted. Is anybody here from Unitel?
Sorry.
All right, we have a, hey, I'm shortly an emergency request from Unitel, uh, to essentially replace the pond. That has been installed on I C O to do time heavy theme. Yeah, horizontal direction through, okay. And so, uh, we have that, they have a paper here, of course, you also have the actual.
Personally, it's. Um, I I actually could not find on the map. I'm the personal member, are we?
I'll talk about this, actually two.
Oh, you will, okay.
Good evening, thank you for your time. Uh, my name is Jake Campbell, I'm principal engineer with Unitel Granite State Gas Transmission. Um, I'm going to give a summary overview of the project. I also have with me Sam Martin and Matt Hall there from uh Russell Pipeline Services. They're our, our engineer on the project, so they can answer any. Any technical questions, so. First of all, I'll just give you a bearing of where where the project resides, so. Uh, Granite State Gas Transmission operates an eight-inch uh natural gas pipeline between. Uh, York Woods Road Route ninety-one. Uh, up between and up to um Embry Bridge. So it's along, we're along the, that same utility corridor that such a many powers in. And America has a northeast pipelines in, so. So we're looking at, we have currently a, well, we, sorry, as an aerial crossing of our pipeline at the Great Works River, which is almost dead center between those two roads that I that I mentioned. We are looking at, so our pipe actually runs through a twelve-inch steel casing. It bridges, it spans the river from the old railroad bridge abutment to abutment. Um, due to some erosion and and concerns with the integrity of that casing, not necessarily the pipeline itself, but the casing. We are looking at uh replacing that next season, next year, summertime.
All right. Hey, Ron Mike.
So it wasn't me, all right. So we're planning on replacing it using a method called horizontal directional drilling, so we'll actually drill the pipe under the river. So, um, one of our questions for you is, when we're reading the regulations for uh shoreline zoning. It doesn't really talk about utilities. Uh, lots of law see about structures. Uh, we do recognize that where we are going to cross Great Works River, it is in a shoreline district. As you can see on our maps, our planned work area. On both sides, north and the south of the river, are about two hundred feet from those existing buttons. Uh, we have no, we're not going to have any impacts to existing wetlands. We're not adding any structures. Again, we're replacing the the pipeline and. Really what we're, what we're doing. To answer your, your question about the zoning, it's actually two, so on the, on the south side of the Great Works River. We actually lease our easement from such a main power. On the north side, we actually own our easement in feet, the old fossil domain railroad corridor. So, so it's actually, that's why it's actually two.
He just. I think he just.
Yeah.
Over, and here's a map of southward, and just pointing to what area, I can't.
Oh, sure. Oh, no.
Right down. Might help something.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think we're all thinking of the area right in front of Brixton. Yeah, I think the river is down towards.
Yeah, the river's outside. Yeah.
And where is the work? Where is? He's a very processful. You know, you had a single X, they think of a diagram. Well, it's just, those are the calls to call to roll.
Yeah, oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Wait a minute.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you know, we're just working here. People with side is.
Ah, okay. I got, I got right at the.
Yeah.
So, okay, so hold on, there's, here's, here's the, right, okay, right, okay, there's the river, there's the big old river, here's the river going in the town. This is the corner. Okay, I got you.
Right, but. Kind of like. Right, yes, right, yes.
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, right there, right there. Where we cross very much. Right, Old Mill. Just. Okay, so there is a new station right there. Uh, no, so you got a, this is Old Mill, this is the.
And add your side street.
Right. Yeah. I think they all just got.
Yeah, I didn't.
There's a. It's a power check, it's all the way up high.
Hey, can I? You're not, I'm using my sources there all the way. So currently, I don't feel like.
No, so where the, where we're used to be, that they originally exposed by the symptoms. And there's a few of these. They actually.
Yeah, I don't worry. I got.
Yeah, they're, they're over. It's standing.
And now the bridge is going.
Where's it been gone?
And why is there?
Okay. So I guess there's not anything for permit. Easy, are you going to have to get there? No, if there's, we don't have any.
So the work zones setback, so the buffer with D minus seventy-five.
I can't hear it.
Yeah. With D are the, the river, they have a seventy-five foot buffer from the edge of the river, and we're outside of that. So you can tell them, you don't have to do any. Four army.
So. We use the rest of the thing here, though, is it's a public utility, and they're allowed in any subject of any recite plan. I couldn't really suppose anything, I I didn't really see any additional reasons here.
I don't have my mic, so I'll speak up loud, so, yeah, your mic's up there. So, real quick, it's in a casing now, exposed to the elements, I get it, we want to protect it.
Yeah.
You're gonna, uh, you say directionally drilled under the river, starting well far, you know, back on each side. All that makes perfect sense. How are you protecting it when it's underground? I know if there's underground storage tanks, there's all kinds of requirements for those. What's your requirement for protecting the environment if it goes underground? It's very similar, so internally, that that line is also, so we have a cathodic protection system, so. That, it it will actually work better when the whole line is buried in brown and going, going through the casing the way it is now, so it will be cathetically protected. We have a. All regular fire system, that's what's occurring on the pipe, and we have anodes and stuff, so it's, it's very similar to a very. You know, fuel tank, so we do, we have regulations and requirements. And if it's a very fuel tank of some sort, you're going to have a record, you're going to understand, you know, what's the volume in that tank, so if you end up with a deep, you're going to know. What's your mechanism for measuring potential needs through that pipe? So we, every, probably five to seven years, we actually do an internal line inspection of that, of our pipeline, so we have. A facility in um Wellsmead, we actually, we made way here called Pipeline Pig. Or an I L I device, an internal line um inspection, so it actually travels the motor of the gas. We push it from from wells down to Elliott. And it will, it takes measurements, and it will, it can detect dense metal loss, erosion, you know, that may be occurring on the, on the pipeline, and then we. You know, if anything like that does occur, then we, we have to go with it.
Thank you. Jen, this is asking for a shoreline zoning permit, but also public utilities following a major site.
It's only shoreline zoning permit because the utility is already there, they just have to fix what's already there. So this is.
We're pushing that one.
This is how.
So we can waive, we don't have to go any public hearings.
Don't, all you have to do is grant a permit, and then we can.
Great. Uh, is there a motion to approve permit? So.
Second.
Then move to second, and then any further conversation.
I I just wanted an assurance that whenever it gets, right, we get to the limits.
Remember.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes. Right, I mean, you know, obviously, again, we're not impacting wetlands, we will be, we're abiding some wetlands, we're going to do erosion sudden control, it's on state requirements, and then we will restate. You know, everything, so.
Right, good. Uh, so just for the record, Tony, you're voting, that was Hershey, Greg, and Aaron, you're voting. I just want to make sure we're aware of who's, you know, who likes to. The hall in favor, motion approved. Our patient, Andrew Sree, thank you very much. Appreciate you. Thank you. Alright, uh, is anybody here from Seacoast, Michigan?
Can you guys do it underpass or downtown? I think a little did.
That's a lot bigger than what we. Charge has seen there's five plus.
I know.
Isn't the law force, don't they have a? Don't they have?
Alright, sorry. Oh, I get it.
Eric, can you just pause for one second? We're having a battery.
Yeah, well, recess is being.
Sorry.
Sorry.
You can wait two minutes longer, right?
I just know.
Hold on a second.
We're, 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 we're being.
I haven't lied.
We put it.
Come to you guys for a moment.
We're going old school technology.
Yeah. Oh, like because of this or?
No, my God, it's dying.
You've been here for.
Oh, so you don't, oh, so you gotta plug this. I'm surprised it lasts. Mine's like, just like this and does not last. It's like, yeah, like half an hour.
Can you go to the podium so I can see if it will get you? Yeah, alright. Deb, can you hear him from home?
Can you talk?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, I can. Okay, sorry, we had a battery issue because we've been zooming so long, so as long as you can hear him, we're good. If you can't, let us know.
Okay, it's good.
Thank you. So eventually.
Oh, and, and. Did your code enforcement officer get new?
Yeah, I mean, you go back, Alan. Hey, sir, you have the floor. Oh, good evening, good evening. My name's Jeff Aliva. I'm with Civil Consultants here. We're representing the school for this redevelopment. Uh, to construct new gymnasium in place of the one that burned. So, um, well, we have a site plan amendment application, uh, that has been submitted earlier this month. The project is to construct a new insulated concrete warm gymnasium that would be. All, almost twice as large as what's out there now. Uh, the gym will have a multi-use for spectators, um, men's and, um, two, men's and women's, two, two locker rooms. There'll be public bathrooms and area for concessions and also an office space for, uh, gym teachers and that for the school. Um, the location of the new building is very similar, just about the same, uh, location as the existing. As I mentioned, the building is a little bit larger. This new structure will have a new water line and new sewer lines. Uh, the water line decides to accommodate a sprinkler system to the building based on the size and the usage. Um, also there'll be new, uh, electricity brought to the building, uh, for, uh, to the newer structure. Other than that, really pretty straightforward. There's minimal impact, minimal increase on, of the curvaceous arms, uh, the property. Uh, what we have here is, um, the gymnasium portion of the building is a, a flat roof. That is going to be drained through the internal drains that will let it discharge out, um, on the western side of the building. That will, uh, be into like a, a, a brick wrapped area, and then that will be swaled into, uh, the discharge, which is that. Stream drainage way that is on the southern part of the property. There is a spoke portion of the building, as you see in the architectural plans. That's where the, the locker rooms and bathrooms are, the concession, the main entrance is. That, that stormwater will be discharged to a stone drip filter. But, uh, to address the stormwater on that side, and then it'll be piped around the building and also eventually discharged into that swale. So we're getting treated toward that slow portion of the stormwater as it comes across. Since that stream is, uh, existing buildings within seventy five foot distance from that stream. We need to do a M D E P, uh, D V R or work adjacent to the resource. I've been emailing, uh, D E Ps, uh, just to get their initial comments. I haven't heard response, anything back. Started that kind of conversation back in June, when we started looking at the site design, uh, for this. So then that, it's, um, pretty straightforward. I think it's pretty straightforward for a redevelopment, uh, to build a new structure, school. That provides minimal impacts on the existing site. No, we haven't, uh, we, I haven't submitted that yet because I wanted to get, and if there was any changes here, um, on that. Um, I reached out also to the main, the physical licenses. It's kind of depending what mapping look at, it's that maybe a stream. Haven't heard back from them yet. As you know, all state departments are very, for personnel. So the response times takes a while. Jen, from what we just heard, do you have any, see any issues or things that we should be aware of here? Looking at the application, see if I can beat today.
I don't see any issues at this time. I will tell you that they will have to go in from the historic district to rebuild. I'll send you that application.
Oh. Did you just, one question, is there a personal requirement with this kind of structure?
Um.
If she, if it's.
Yeah.
Suddenly inside, then you're expecting it to be filled and they're gonna be, I just noticed that, you know, when I go to before. The parking has become really tight even when the town hall is filled and their parking lot, it's, you know, I. Never do, but now.
Yeah. Yeah, so if we look at what we have here, um, the, the larger facility, um, was still. The school functions will be about the same. It, it's really gonna be about the same from what they have before. They had, um, spectators come in, they just, you know, line the edges. Now this new design has actually seating spaces that work better for that. So as far as, you know, school functions and things like that, I don't, it's paid a higher demand for parking there. Um, where, where there may be some, uh, additional parking, uh, but it would kind of tie into off season or out of school time. Is it just open to the community and they use it? There's the existing parking lot that's there by the school that could be used for, for the gym. So I see it as almost a wash or parking usage based on what was previously existing to what's now. Other than the fact that the new facility just has the space to accommodate spectators.
But. Hear me out.
Yeah.
So, you know, before, I don't know, I don't know if they have their basketball team plays, but now they have all this space and hopefully they can host a tournament. And now you're hosting a tournament, maybe four to sixteen, and all of their parents and players and students and all of that. I mean, do they anticipate anything like that?
Um, I don't know that answer. I can find out for, for town staff on that. Um, I think if it is a situation, uh, like that, where it's, uh, there may be anticipation for a high demand traffic. Then you kind of, what we do, like to do in other towns, if there's a fight. Tournament like that is just work, let town staff know that there's going to be that, that kind of, uh, requirement and then work with. Adjacent parking area. So if it's on a weekend, maybe in the park of the school or, or that. It's not limited to very small, not a parking, it's like a school, but around the, across the way or tournaments. I don't know the answer of what they're anticipating. I've got kind of a follow-up question to that one, but I don't believe it's this, but I know like the restaurant we have, you have, you have X number of spots for patrons or X number of, that's possible agents. There anything like that for a building like this? Um, there is, there are, um, there are parking requirements. Uh, I didn't put anything on the plan because I, I really, if you look at the majority of this, uh, usage of the building of school. And they already had amazing there that, that, that fit parking there may not have been great at that time. Uh, but looking at the fact that, that, uh, this school is not just paying, you know, increasing the, the student talent to accommodate for this. Like, so I, I, I can provide additional information, but I looked at it as being kind of a one for one. Is that, except that you're gonna give a new facility that now provides the, the, you know, traditional space for spectators. I'm just, my only question there is, uh, I can see a parking brake running in here. And if, if you increase the size and, you know, increase the capacity there, uh, I think that if it doesn't, if the current parking doesn't cover, you know, the requirements, then. I think we see a parking. Station. But I can, and I don't know what the number is, you know, it's built in, coming, it's like, when you keep going, you need to have different spots. I don't know where that's. Jen, do we have, uh. A hall of honor working first. And. I know there, I, I've heard of the conversation and that, you know, yeah. No?
They're going through the process right now of hiring a planner. Uh, we do have a planner that's coming on board on Monday to help out with some projects, special projects. Um, I don't know. Um, if they will be helping out with these kind of projects, I'm not really sure. Is there something specific that you need?
Well, you know, uh, gone for some of this and I'm, I'm seeing, in our opinion, the piece of our, our. I do share the concern with parking. Uh, we have issued waivers and tasks. I do understand. That while this is largely rebuilding what was there, and I don't disagree that the people are already there to begin with. They're just standing inside. It's literally just a panel in. So. I think it's already occurring. I think, I'd like to hear perfectly from the school what they need supposed to happen, that there is, that it will turn to make to be happening. Uh, I think. Some of these questions can come up in the interim public hearing. Uh, I think we should move this public hearing tonight or our next meeting. And I think we can get some answers on that, maybe flesh out parking, because again, we believe parking, but. We want to do it right. Waiver is needed. It was discussed, no way, uh, if something else is. That as well. So I'm hoping that we can have some assistance in going through this. I don't really feel right on, if you get a third party review. Unless you deem otherwise.
No, I don't think so, but I, what I would say is due to town staff vacations that just occurred, that's why you don't have a better review on this right now. So if we can keep this at initial, you schedule the public hearing, do that. We can have everything answered for you next meeting.
When is your time? Oh, immediate or immediate, yes. No, I, yeah. They want to get, start construction soon possible so they can get the gym ready for.
If you take it off.
Yeah, yeah, they say they're ready to go, but I understand the process and find how that works. And, and we can, we can address the, if there will be a public hearing, hopefully we could do a public hearing and, and oppose, um, potentially for, will that say night? To keep that process moving. You mentioned that we also have to go to the store.
That's gonna be easy for you.
Okay.
I have one question, if you don't mind. When is the building coming down? Because it was supposed to come down in June and here we are a month later and it has not. Do we have a deadline for that?
I, I will talk with the contractors. They've been working with that.
Okay.
One of the, the delays at the time, and it's been resolved, was, um, taking care of C and P. Um, getting rid of the, the power. Now that's resolved. I wanna say that there was some thought that there might be some expenses in the building, but that, that had to be remediated before that.
Okay.
I can know that.
Yep.
Real, real great.
Actually.
Just commented to it about the historic review, uh, the process for that before the public hearing or after, how's that?
No, so the historic, you guys really have nothing to do with that process? That process just has to happen before I can issue a building permit for that building where they're in the historic zone, um, district, sorry. But, uh, that really has nothing to do with the planning board.
No, so maybe, I'm hopeful it be established in a hearing for the next meeting. I can see. The day is a Saturday.
It's August seventh, yeah.
We, we think.
Yep.
Know the standards of the game here. You can, or we say, no, we needed, that we can flush that out in the public hearing.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so we can, I can get information, folks on, on the parking. I know that there's like seventy nine parking spaces on site currently. Uh, but we can, we can flush out what, what the needs are for.
The facilities we're dedicated to.
There'd be, yeah, there'd be school, and if you look at what students and, and teacher usage would be during school day. Anticipating that, that's totally different than a Saturday.
Right.
So we'll look at, at, at that aspect. The one item that we did ask for, with, with respect to it, uh, uh, the landscaping plan, uh, for the project here. Our, our intention here is really, the, the, the placement of this building is. Over pavement, existing pavement and grass area that's there behind, uh, on the side between here and town hall. Uh, we, there will be some, uh, trees that would be need to be cut in there. We're proposing to plant some shrubs and infill that area between the building and the southern property line, which is near that stream. But we show, we show, we've indicated what we want to do there, but, um, we didn't provide a detail, a landscape architect plan. We're seeking a way to that. Just purely to, to keep costs down with the budget.
One more question. I see you're in, you're, you're split zone.
Yes.
Um, is there any concern about that, that part of it is in the village?
Yeah. Yeah, we basically do. So if we look at where the, figure, we're, we're holding.
Big on the other side.
On the others, work, it's, it could be larger and it's simple. It's a little bit bigger on the door side. Front is mostly the same, but that's. It's a, it's a little bit bigger. It's like a little.
I am looking at the public hearing.
I think we're gonna be.
Seven, six thirty.
Second. I agree. So, yeah, we'll have communications that's still giving for the page. And what you got. Yeah. Okay. Any, any other questions or comments? Both that, you know, again, I just get staff and stuff, so we're definitely, if it's what that is, learn what needs and.
For sure.
Any, any larger issues, something like. Like what we're. Right. Thank you, thank you. I, yeah, they're both. I was here.
Apparently, there was, apparently I was both here and absent, but. Misspelled.
The wrong. Oh, that's, Aaron Moose was here. Um, so I totally. Make that small correction, I would motion to approve, okay?
I'll fix that. I'll fix, oh, she spelled her name wrong?
Yeah.
Second.
Oh, no, Brittany.
Fast and put that.
Yeah.
I've got a most. Questions are second.